The scope of duties that a school board member performs is wide ranging, from making decisions about curriculum to creating and upholding board policies to managing fiscal responsibilities.
The way that these responsibilities are prioritized could determine the academic success and achievement for Collier County.
The members of the school board have the ability to influence the quality of education and impact the lives of students within their county.
A candidate's morals and stance on pressing issues can determine what changes are going to be made if they are elected to the school board.
Candidates that have held other positions of leadership or have been involved in the community have their accomplishments to speak for them. Each candidate has also published their own websites to share their bios, individual platforms, and ideas.
In an effort to help facilitate Collier County voters making informed decisions, The Wave has conducted interviews with the school board candidates discussing their goals for their term on the board, as well as new things they may bring to the table.
The candidates were asked a standard set of questions ranging from their background, philosophy of education, and budgeting. Follow-up questions are only based on whether a member of the editorial board has a need for clarification.
In the interests of non-bias and non-partisanship, the editorial board at The Wave has decided to present the raw, unedited interviews of each Collier County School Board candidate on our website. The candidates were made aware of this in our invitation to them.
Elections have consequences and voting is your right. If you are not eighteen, your voice can still be heard. Engage with your family and your neighbors.
I mentioned before, this is our view of the gym.
I love it. You guys have an amazing campus, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so this is the hot seat, right?
Yeah, so you know, we all have the same set of questions. We're just all reading through it one at a time and that kind of situation. But I'm ready if you guys are ready.
Yep.
Okay. So I'd like to take this opportunity again to thank you for coming in today. We truly appreciate you taking the time here to be with us. The purpose for these interviews is to inform voters and stakeholders, of course, on the importance of the role of the school board in education and to increase student involvement in education. To begin, we'd like to introduce ourselves as the editorial board and then we will proceed. So, you met me earlier, but I'm Jorge Rodriguez, I'm the editor in chief.
I'm Sophie Lauren, I'm the executive editor.
I'm Madison Moore, I'm the managing editor.
I'm Helena Davis and I'm the opinions editor.
I'm Emma Fraser, I'm the features editor.
I'm Al Richardson, I'm the science editor.
I'm Grant Sorel, I'm the web design editor.
I'm Logan Renau, I'm the digital media editor.
He's our cameraman. So yeah, now we're gonna get started. So first, we'd like to discuss any background that you may have. So is there any background experience that you have that qualifies you to become a school board member?
Okay, so first of all, I was a teacher many years ago before I had children and then I became a stay-at-home mom. In about 2011, when my children were pretty young, we started looking at the local schools, both public and private, to see what options were available. I taught high school, so I didn't have as much background on elementary. And then I started reading these books by Edie Hirsch, The Making of Americans, Cultural Literacy, The Schools We Need and Why We Don't Have Them. He's since wrote Why Knowledge Matters, all great books on education. And then I stumbled upon classical, the classical liberal arts model. And we decided, my husband and I decided, let's bring that to Naples. And so that's when it started in 2011. We started doing the research on how to start a charter school. So like your founder here, Ms. Jane Watt, we basically did the same thing and I had reached out to her all those years ago, asking her for some advice. And so my husband and I founded Mason Classical Academy in Naples. We opened in 2014 with four hundred and fourteen students. And now we have over fourteen hundred K-12. And through that experience, I mean, I had to, we didn't have paid staff. I've also done this as a volunteer, just like Ms. Watt. But you know, we had to learn about facilities, the education law, marketing, actual curriculum. I mean, we pretty much had to learn a little bit of everything. And I had the education piece just from being a teacher and, but also really delving into these topics that often have been overlooked with progressive models. And that's why I liked the charter schools, we're providing different options, not this one-size-fits-all for our community. So that's a little bit about my background in education and how I feel. And I also did serve on the school board before, from 2014 to 2018, and chose not to run for reelection, so.
We've reviewed your campaign materials. Could you tell us how best describes what you hope to accomplish on the board?
Okay, so the biggest thing for me, the foundational years, those elementary years are so critical for your, like now you all are in high school. So the key to me is we've got to do more for elementary schools and building that solid foundation. So one of the things I would like to implement district-wide would be the core knowledge sequence, not to be confused with Common Core. But I'd like to do that. The other main priority that's coming up on the board is the hiring of the new superintendent. Dr. Patton is resigning at the end of this year. Philosophically, we disagree on pretty much everything when it comes to education. What I would look for in a leader to lead this district in the next, I would say, let's say, the next decade, we need someone who's courageous, someone who actually does support school choice and charter schools instead of charter schools being a thorn in the district's side, which we have always been unfortunately. So yeah, someone who shares similar principles and values and really, I, this is a real important piece for me. Before I became a mom, I was teaching. Once you become a parent and you'll find this out someday if you decide to have kids, your whole perspective changes when you become a parent. And that's one thing, the superintendent does not have kids. And the decisions you make directly impact children. And if you can't feel those or really understand those impacts, I don't think you can really relate. And so that superintendent I would want that has had children and has that perspective, so. But those are the big things, the curriculum for those foundational years and this principal or superintendent hire are gonna be the two biggest priorities.
Thank you. Is there any specific reason that you're running for a seat or reelection on the school board?
Yeah, so in 2018, when I chose not to run, I said I would never do this again, ever. And I really, at the time, meant it. I just, I felt I was able to start a school from the ground up with, I mean, it's not like you meet, so like Jane Watt's like the only other person I know that has started a school. But dealing with the bureaucracy, I was also in the voting minority. And so a lot of the things we were trying to accomplish and pass, just it was a three-two vote. When I was approached by some members of the community who support education, saw an opportunity with this race, there's three seats up. This is an opportunity to get back, hopefully get a majority of new faces, new like-minded people who understand what we have, what we're up against. And so I thought about it, it was a family discussion because when you run for office, it does involve your children, it involves your husband, it's a family affair. So my kids are twelve and fourteen now. And if they weren't on board, I would've said, I'm not doing it. But they understood that this is our responsibility. And being in American citizen and being involved in your community, sometimes you have to step up. And I'll tell you, this is not easy. I was just talking, there's attack mailers out there and you have to have thick skin and your family has to be on board. But I decided this is an opportunity and I'm willing to do it and represent the people and be that voice. Because not everyone wants to run for office because it's not an easy experience, sometimes painful, so. But I'm willing to do that and be the voice for the people here, so.
Great, thank you. And then are there any previous accomplishments of the school board that you plan to build upon or make further contributions to?
So one of the things that I will speak up that I think the district has done well is in the, in the safety aspect with having Collier deputies at every school. We've done a lot of things, school, I think even here, your campus has done a lot in the security realm to make it a much safer campus. So those are things that I feel that Collier County has done well in. Where I think they can go a step further and making sure safety and security is even bolstered at a higher level, comes down to the discipline and decorum and the high standards within the schools themselves. And that come, and I'm seeing a real fall in terms of the standards for the students and how they behave, how they interact with their peers, their teachers. And so I think we have to do more at the school, individual school levels to ensure that safe campus. And if the discipline's a problem, that does impact your safety and security and your whole school culture and environment. And I'll say this, when you walk into a school like MIA, you can just physically feel like this culture that exists here of a healthy, safe atmosphere. And that's, I can't say that about every school, so that's something I think we can, we can do, so.
You said doing more on like a school level, what would that entail, do you feel?
That's gonna take the, so this is where the superintendent position, she currently has a lot of the power and authority. And I think you have to hand over some of those things to the principal and administrative team at the school level so that they can do more. But as a board member, we vote on policies. So I think we as board members have to do more on the policy side for student behavior, discipline issues, and then make sure, ensure that the administrators at the individual schools are ensuring that those policies are being enforced. And because they're not really rules if you're not enforcing them, so that's what I meant by that, so. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
So now that we've established a background with you, we're gonna shift our attention towards schools. So in the last five years, there've been two major hurricanes and a pandemic. So how would you support the students and staff in the event of such a major crisis?
Okay, so one of the things I'll share with all of you, so since the pandemic, this goes, our board does policy. So one of the things they did was they changed, they created a policy that said, in the event there's another pandemic or endemic situation, they handed over the authority to the superintendent. So what I would say is if I'm elected on the board, that policy needs to change and be put back in the hands of the school board members because we are the ones that are elected by the people. The superintendent is just a government bureaucrat employee that's supposed to work for the board. And if you don't have those decisions being made by the board, that's a real big problem for future issues. So like I said, policy is gonna be our biggest thing that we can do as board members. I will say, our district does do a lot in terms of the hurricane shelters, especially during Irma. I will say that, I have to give them a pat on the back, they did a great job with ensuring those things, you know, were open and efficiently run. But yeah, I hope I answered your question on that, okay.
Alright, please describe what you believe a perfect school would look like.
So a perfect school, if there was such a thing, one, I would say the teachers have the freedom to teach. And actually, most teachers that get into the profession do it because they have passion about their subject area, whether it's their science teachers or math teachers. And unfortunately, there's been too much bureaucracy and mandates placed on teachers. Probably not so much you'll see in the charter school worlds, as you will in the district. And so in a perfect school, the teachers will be able to really actually teach and get rid of all these burdens that have nothing to do with impacting students. Discipline and decorum, school culture, I think a perfect school would be that, you know, that there's virtues of respect, responsibility, that people care about the school that they're in. And that's one thing I will say about charter schools is that it's a choice. You have to choose to come here and I think there is more of a mindset of wanting to take care of your school because you choose to go there, whereas the district schools, it's like, well, this is where I'm zoned for. So if we could kind of change that mindset of, you know, having more ownership in your school along with the parents, and that would be the other piece, is that in a perfect school, is that the parents and the schools are partners in educating the kids, not working against each other, but working in tandem to support our students, so.
Can I ask like what, parents and teachers, like how, like would their cooperation like work in schools?
So from, so I'm forty-three. Back when I was in school, when a teacher would maybe call home, there's a discipline problem. It seems nowadays, there's always, not always, I don't like to use that term, that there tends to be more blame on the school versus responsibility on the child. Instead of, back in the day, it used to be, alright, you get a call home, the parents would be, you know, on the kid, like this is unacceptable behavior. So being in a parent-school partnership is, look, we've got a discipline problem, we need to work on it. We can do our part here at the school, you gotta do your part at home to help ensure your child is, you know, prepared to, because the bottom line is, you can't, and teachers can't have a quality classroom of instruction if there's constant disruption and discipline problems, it just doesn't work. So that's where the parent-school partnership comes along, that we're working together for the child.
Why do you think that has changed?
I think there's a lot of cultural changes that have happened. You've also seen a breakdown in a lot of families, unfortunately. Divorce rates, two-parent homes, that makes things challenging. So I think that would probably contribute a lot to that, so.
Do you think you could clarify some specific examples of bureaucracy being an obstacle in the school board or from the superintendent in creating what your vision is of a perfect school?
Okay, so if you actually go on the Collier School District website, you'll see, here's the organizational chart. And it's at the top is the people, we the people. And then it's the board, then it's the superintendent, then it's the administration, and it trickles down. Unfortunately, the way it has been going for probably the last decade is it's backwards. The people are no longer really at the top and the board's not really then working on behalf. Like what I tell people is, the board represents the people to the administration. They don't, but the board has been confused. They think they represent the administration to the people. And I think in order to get back to trying to get to a perfect school model is that the people need to be heard. I think a lot of parents and community members feel frustrated that their voices aren't heard. And because the board has given up, this goes with the bureaucracy, a lot of their power and authority, they've handed it off to the superintendent who's unelected. That's problematic. So we have to regroup, get back to, oh, and then back to the organizational chart, what you've also seen is a massive growth in administrative, high-level administrative positions. And these are mostly six-figure salaries, by the way. Most of these people have no direct impact on the students. And some of the positions that have been created have zero, you have to ask yourself, alright, we're hiring this position, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. How, and I always feel like the decisions are what's best for our students in the decision-making process. And if these people have really no impact on the kids and education, why are we having that position? And I think we've also lost sight, and I'll say this, this is the bureaucracy too, is, and it's gotten so big, is you rarely hear them talk about the academic proficiency and performance in the schools. And if that's not one of your top topics at every board meeting, then we've got a problem. Because that's ultimately, that should be our focus. You hear it in a campaign year where they'll suddenly, the school board members who are running again for reelection suddenly are, oh, it's an urgent thing, we've got math and reading scores that are very low. We're, it's, we're really on top of this, I'm thinking, well, what have you been doing the last four years? Not talking about it until an election year, so.
Thank you. How do you feel that schools should approach very controversial topics like religion and politics?
So there's policy in place about that. I don't think the schools should, there's a lot of issues that have been coming and creeping into the schools. One of the big topics that has been, I've heard on the campaign trail, I don't know if you saw it there in Collier, there was a gender bread assignment, did you hear about it, anyone? Okay, so this caused quite a bit of controversy because one, it wasn't really tied into the curriculum. And now it's, the whole point, the teacher went off the curriculum to teach about genders and pronouns and all these topics that I just, my opinion is, I'm all for good quality curriculum. All these other social and political issues, we're dealing with minors and parents who have maybe different viewpoints. You really, you gotta keep that out of the schools, I feel very strongly about that. At our school, at our charter school, we have a very clear curriculum of what we teach and the books they read. And we don't have all those problems with the parents getting crazy and upset about things that shouldn't, should have no place in the schools, so. And religion, you know, we, I know there's always talk about separation of church and state. No school should be trying to force kids to believe any kind of religion, but we should also be respectful to everyone's, that they have a right to follow any religion they want. It's just, it shouldn't be, and actually, you should be teaching world religions so students actually understand them, but not indoctrinating them to force them on believing a certain religion over another, so.
Thank you.
You mentioned earlier about the one-size-fits-all learning model. How would you advocate to ensure that children aren't forced into that within the district?
So it's rather difficult because that's, that is the district model. Now, I do think the foundational years, having that needs to be there. But one of the caveats is there isn't much for, see, they spend a lot of time focusing on raising the lowest percentile students, which I think is a good thing to do, we wanna bring them up. But unfortunately, the students who have been forgotten about are the, tend to be the high-level achieving students. So we have got to do a much better job and whether you wanna label it gifted, I'm not really interested in that. I just, I know there are kids who are high-level students, they should have other options. So one thing I can share, we do at Mason, we do math block. So it starts as young as kindergarten. Kindergartners could be moved up to with first graders. My daughter, from third to fourth grade, they had a little small group of kids skip fourth grade and move them into fifth grade. So she's in eighth grade, she's already doing, she's in honors geometry already. So I feel like we have to do more and have options. So it isn't then necessarily one-size-fits-all. And then you can provide the support for the kids who need more help, maybe in math. And then the kids who are going, they're not just stunted at, well, this is, this is as far as you can go because this is all we do. I think we need to have more avenues for them to do that. So I would, I think the math block is, would be, yeah, definitely.
Lastly, we'd like to ask some questions regarding budgeting and CCPS. How do you think the board should support all schools in CCPS regarding safety and security? You already kind of talked about it.
Yeah, so one thing we were talking about as we were walking through the schools, one thing that's, has always been an issue in Collier County is they treated the charter schools differently. As you know, the, we don't, the charter schools don't get the same money. And I firmly believe, this question came up to me on Tuesday at an event, I believe money should follow the child. If that's something this state can move towards, where, alright, this is the X number of dollars, whatever that number looks like, let's just, let's just use ten grand, is a hypothetical, maybe it's twenty. But okay, say it's ten, that money follows the child to that school. One of the things I was telling him as well, back when I was on the board, I was helping MIA because of that Track K situation in the land. We did get the board to come along and vote, we've always, we're always in the voting minority, but to come along and bring that extra dollars to MIA. But we've got to do more in terms of making it fair, like the capital outlay dollars. They've, it's gotten better, but it's still, it's not equal. And until, until that happens, you can't really have full school choice. And maybe it comes down to the state doing more with like vouchers or, I don't even wanna call it a voucher, it's just, hey, the money should follow the student to the school of their parents' choice. I'm just an advocate of that. What, and even if you're homeschooling, I mean, parents should get something. I mean, if they're not sending their kids to school and they have to pay for books. I'm just a big proponent of choice, so.
What experience do you have with complicated budgets? When you're given a budget for a district, will it be a process to determine if it's a good budget for the system?
So well, with my experience, I've been on the board at Mason since twenty twelve, well, twenty twelve officially. And so, you know, we've dealt with budgets, we have to pass annual budgets, and I was on the school board for four years. I would like to see major changes in the budgeting process. The way this current school board does it needs to be completely revamped. And this is another policy issue. They removed the school board's ability to have committees. Well, we should have a finance oversight committee to help the board because we're a five-person board, dealing with a one-point-four-billion-dollar budget. We have a lot of people in this community who have incredible business experience, who want to help and volunteer their time and help the board make the best decisions. So my, another thing I would like to see change if I get elected is the whole budgeting process needs to be completely revamped because the way it is, is staff comes and presents and the board just rubber stamps whatever the superintendent tells them to do. I don't think they're really delving into the budgets and getting into that. We need to do that in the future.
What are the main issues you believe are hurting teacher retention and how would you plan to combat these issues?
So I think we could all agree that the cost of living in Southwest Florida is very expensive and the teacher, yeah. And just in general, it is, it is expensive and teacher pay is low. And with a huge bureaucracy of high-level admin that has grown exponentially, that needs to be reduced so we can free up more money into the budget. We also have to deal with, the district has to deal with teacher unions and negotiating salaries, but there needs to be more work done on the salary side of things. I also would support, because at our school, we have, teachers are able to have clubs or teach music lessons after school, we don't, and they get to keep that money. Like that's, because it's a benefit for, it's a win-win. It's a win for the students because they get, whether they wanna take piano lessons or get extra tutoring or do a club that a teacher does, and then the teacher gets an extra stipend of money. And I would like to see that across the district. And I don't think they allow teachers to do those kinds of things. The other thing, most teachers know they're getting into education, it's not gonna be this high, high-paying job. But back to what I was saying about the passion and wanting to teach. If you remove, job satisfaction is gonna be huge on the retention. Teachers will probably keep coming back to MIA because they know they're supported by their administration. They're able to teach and they're not given overwhelming extra burdens. And then the other thing is, the district continually changes things every year to year on the teachers. And I was in the district for only two years and I saw it every year that I got there. It was like, alright, this is what we're gonna do and you have to fill up these binders and do X, Y, Z and all this busy work. And then next year it was, oh, remember those, we're not doing those, we're gonna be doing this. And now you have to learn a whole new thing and that's, that's not how you're gonna retain teachers. So I do think the job satisfaction overall, we've gotta create a better environment for them, so. We got a music though, I like it. So do you have a class after this or?
Yes, this is, this is our third block, right?
Yeah, or a month or something.
A launch or third block.
Will you just rock out for a little bit?
That was really all we have, so is there anything else that you wanna add or anything you feel in this?
So the only thing I'd wanna say is, school board races tend to be, you know, this is just in general, on any ballot, so the election's November eighth. Most people are gonna be coming because, oh, governor's on the ballot, we've got, you know, or if it's a presidential year, congress senators, those are the kind of people that are, people come to the polls for. They get down to the bottom of the ticket, they're like, oh, school board, I'm just gonna guess, maybe I'll circle in the first person, which I happen to be the. Which I happen to be the, I'll be the first person in district three, it's alphabetical, so I guess that's good for me. But, um, is educating people on the candidates, um, and getting people involved. Like, that's one thing people, I've seen more involvement this election time around than I did back in fourteen, so that's encouraging. Um, but I can tell you, I'll, I'll be at the early voting polling locations, meeting voters, and they don't know who anyone is. They're just like, or they'll call people, hey, who should I vote for, for school board? So I tell people in their sphere of influence, you need to be the one to reach out to your friends, your neighbors and say, hey, I met, you know, candidate Kelly Lipter and, um, you really should check, check into her, you know, here's her website, whatever. But I think we have to do more in knowing who the local candidates are because they impact, the impact on the local level is sometimes far greater than the bigger offices. So, um, hopefully, moving forward, we can get more people involved in knowing who the candidates are. And I appreciate you all doing this and I don't know where this video is gonna go, but, um.
It'll be posted on our newspaper website.
Okay, cool. So hopefully people watch it and get to know the candidates and.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole goal. I wanna just inform everyone, like I said earlier.
Well, thank you because the next generation, a lot of times people think you all are disengaged. And I, I'm telling people, I'm seeing a different thing, at least at our school, um, kids are, um, kids, I don't wanna call you kids. You young men and women are becoming more engaged and I appreciate you taking the time to, to do this and ask really good questions, so. Well done. Thank you, of course.